The November meeting of the Hiram City Council. Esther McGrady?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Father, we thank you tonight because you are great. We say thank you tonight because you are great unto us. We thank you for your grace and mercy. Thank you for your protection in and through this day. God, we pray now for these appointed elected officials. We pray for our law enforcement officers. Father, we pray as always, God, that your wisdom and knowledge will lead us into this day, into this night, for the rest of our life. In Jesus' name I pray with faith believing. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pray. Let us pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to share a few of the pictures that there are many pictures that were put on social media about our Faith in Blue weekend. The picture in our top left is a banner that was made. We have also pictures of that whole event. And I want Mrs. Ruth to come up. Mrs. Winning Coach Ruth to come on up. She and her husband have supported the city, supported me in our Faith in Blue three-on-three. We had a three-on-three tournament. We had a three-point contest and a dunking contest this year.
She won the dunking contest.
Well, she was a celebrity coach like me.
I sent the photos.
It started with our Friday prayer. Mr. Mayor, you were there. Then it went to the Saturday, all-day Saturday event with the basketball. We had Pavilion Three, which is built with electricity. We had Science Fair. We had giveaways and we had the playground. We also had one of the businesses, Unlimited Party Rental, donated a free inflatable for us. So we had inflatable down here, down there in the Beta Club. If you go to the next slide, well, okay, we're gonna have, keep going. We can go past that. I'll go back to it. We had on the top left Coots Construction, then in the middle on the top, Unlimited Party Rental, then, and then, I'm sorry, that's HNC. HNC on the top left, then Unlimited Party Rental, Coots Construction, the Beta Club, and Ms. Ruth is also instrumental working with the Beta Club, and I think Ms. Byardell was, got something out there too, and Carl Black. Those were businesses that helped us make this a success, no cost to the city whatsoever. So I wanted to thank Ms. Ruth and her husband. If you can go back to that other picture. Yeah, we had a Faith in Blue coloring contest for the employees, and this is the winner.
That's a pretty good job.
And the winner of this, Ms. Councilwoman.
All right.
You also got a championship ring.
Thank you. I will thank you. Thank you so much.
Tell you what, you colored within those lines, girl.
Yes, it took a lot of work. Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't that hard to, no, I'm not gonna tell you. But again, we just support the chief and the council, and we were out there and at least eighty, eighty kids were out there. And we got constant requests, constant asking, when are we gonna do this again? And I wanna put this in here now to the mayor and council. Come spring of next year, hopefully we can start weekend, once a month, basketball tournaments over there, 'cause everyone, Michael, everyone was raving about the renovations over there, that, the improvements that were done, the young, old. Oh, I mean, we had kids playing, we had adult spectators as involved in the kids. So, thank you, and I just wanted to share it with you. Do I have another slide? Is there another slide? I don't think so. Those were the businesses that helped us out. And again, chief and the mayor and city council, thank you. So Faith in Blue's gonna come up again, but we're looking to utilize Pavilion Three, the basketball court, Pavilion One, and Atrium come spring of next year with these community events. Because as some of you, some of you may know, I may have a little bit more free time, so I will be working to bring events to those venues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to add just, like, before you go?
Okay, yes.
I'll take, I'll take both. I'll take credit for both. Lady leads the stuff.
Tiffany, you gotta be down there, too.
Should I be down there?
Yep.
Yeah. Don't worry with your price. Too bad you don't have it, you couldn't hold up.
I have a wrist suit.
That's okay.
Shit, switch it that way, I think. I'm losing Melissa. Oh, yeah, there we go, there we go. Bob. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Maybe put a, correct.
She could've been.
Correct. Thank you.
I wanna thank Paulding County's cutest kid for coming here tonight, Miss Peggy.
And Peggy.
And Peggy.
Hi.
Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to do congratulations for Derek Battle and Melissa Byardell for being re-elected to the city council positions, and to Garnet Morris. Stand up, Garnet. No, stand up. Garnet was elected and he'll be coming in in January. Welcome to showbiz.
Good luck.
They have a motion on item number two.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, public participation, no one has signed up. They have a motion on item number three.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
They have a motion on item number four.
I'm, sorry, I have some questions on item number four, before we move on. Sorry, let me just gather my information.
We made the motion first.
Oh, and then we talked? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Then you asked your question.
Good, that'll give me a minute.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-18 alcohol ordinance amendment.
A second?
Discussion?
Discussion, yes. I have a question. In reference to, I'm so sorry, I thought I had this down. Section six-eight, this will be a question for Jason, please. Section six-eight, section eight of the ordinance stated that you aren't allowed to bring an open bottle of alcohol, I guess, in the vehicle after the event.
Yes.
Do you recall?
B eight indicates that when you're leaving the premises after the event is over, you're not allowed to take open containers of alcohol from the, from the location.
Correct, thank you for that. So my question was, in reference to the alcohol ordinance, the BYOB ordinance, there is language in our current ordinance that allows a open bottle to be transported in a motor vehicle if the bottle is locked in a glove compartment or a trunk. So my thought process is, you know, most people, I'm assuming, would not consume the entire bottle of alcohol during the hour to two hours and a half and then leave their alcohol bottle behind. So can we put language into this BYOB ordinance that is similar to the current ordinance?
If I'm understanding correctly, like, kinda like, so with a wine, wine, there's some jurisdictions have a recorking process. Typically, that is, yeah, I can certainly look into that.
Okay. It's in our current ordinance, our current alcohol ordinance, the BYOB section.
That mirrors a state law.
Right.
We're called Merlot to go. It's kind of an exception to that open container, like he said, to research. I'm not sure if it would apply to where they're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're not purchasing it from that location.
Right.
Be glad to take a look at it.
Okay.
And just as with any ordinance, y'all vote how you wanna vote, but if there's a vote to approve it like it is tonight, then it's approved, and I can certainly look at changing language later, as is the case with any of y'all's ordinances.
Okay.
And there's gonna be another discussion on alcohol ordinance amendments at the end of this month to encompass the ones we didn't get to last week's section.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. There's one more question. Do we have a second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
So wait, we're gonna vote on it the way it is?
And then he's gonna change.
And Jason said he can.
Amendment.
Oh, you amended later, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you. May I have a motion on item number five?
I make a motion to cancel the New Year's Eve block party due to low attendance and to move the firework display to the Christmas tree lighting.
We have a second. Okay, no second, the motion dies.
What, what do you mean?
I thought it was, I guess we should try to get someone to help us with it or something like that. I thought that was the last discussion.
Well, when we discussed it, and Kathy was here, and she pointed out how the attendance has dropped off, we know that unfortunately, you were the only one that stayed to watch the fireworks last year with forty-nine other people.
Yeah.
Right. And then Mr. Tyrone got up and explained that our city residents, nine, ten o'clock, they're outta here, they're going home. And so, in discussion with some people, I think it would be wise to cancel it and take the fireworks, enhance our Christmas tree lighting, and take the funds, Ms. Jackie, are you here? Yeah, and to take some of those funds and apply them to some of the events that they wanna bring in in the spring. So that's why I made the motion to cancel it, move the fireworks after our Christmas tree lighting, as soon as they light the tree and sing and snow falls, then start the fireworks. And it's my knowledge that the only thing that the firework people have to do is get the lower twelve acres permitted, and that they would be allowed to shoot the fireworks off from there.
I know we had quite some discussion about it, and I thought we were able to make some revisions to the, to the events, early, setting them up earlier so our staff could get home. I thought we were gonna end it at nine. I thought we said we'd start, you discussed that, we said we would do it about six or seven. Some ideas, other ideas that were thrown out were to have a designated, like, the first Saturday after Christmas, so it could be a stagnant, we know every year after year, or we could do it on the day of, but, and early enough so our police officers, our staff could get home to their families and bring in a new year. Yeah, the low attendance, I think that's only because we've only had this event for two years and we didn't build it out. I don't think we've had time to build it out. This is the only fireworks show that happens for New Year's, well, I can't say the only, but the county is not doing it, Dallas is not doing it, so we are at a, in a great position to proceed and forward, continue this, that, you know, we started it two years ago, I think we should grow it up, take advantage of being the only city doing it. But I do say we, you know, the timing.
Melissa, did you have a response on Facebook about how many people are interested and how many are attending?
Printed it out.
Currently, we've got, just between like the two events for the tree lighting, we have a thousand, one point one thousand interested, eighty in stating that they were going. New Year's Eve is showing eighty-eight interested with eight going.
That was as of today?
That was as of today, right. So, I mean, I wasn't here for the discussion, I don't mean to rehash anything, but the purpose of us bringing that to you and the idea of doing this was, yes, to further augment the Christmas lighting, Christmas tree lighting event, and to also, just the short turnaround between the time that we hold the tree lighting to the time that we would hold the New Year's Eve event, has proven to be extremely taxing on staff. You've got low attendance, we moved it, we started it down here, we moved it up to Gray's Mill, we didn't see an uptick in it, and it was advertised on both those years. It's just something that we see also being a drain to the city hotel motel tax funds that we set aside for city use, in that we have begun outpacing with that added third event, where maybe doing smaller events through the course of the year would be a way that we could have further community engagement activities, but do so at a better rate of return.
May I say something?
Yes.
One of the other things, you got to the meeting a little bit late today, so you weren't there to hear it. We only have one sponsor for New Year's Eve, and we only have two vendors that have committed.
I know, we started our sponsorship efforts a little late this year. We started in September, not much time to gather, to, you know, especially if you're going to the same businesses, asking them for sponsorships for two events which are back-to-back, one month, one for November, one for, no, both in December, I'm sorry. So I think if, with better efforts, with a little more intentional planning to raise the funds from our businesses here in our city, I think it's doable, I just think we have to take a different approach to it.
One of the other things was that Ms. Stansel checked with the one sponsor and said, if by some chance this gets canceled, would you be willing to sponsor the fireworks for Christmas Eve? And they agreed to do it.
The tree lighting?
Right, the tree lighting, yeah.
You said you had only eight response to the New Year's?
Eighty-eight, as far as being interested in the event generally, and then only eight out of those eighty-eight, I assume, are committed to going, indicating that they would attend.
Yeah, that's not really.
And only one vendor.
Two vendors.
Two vendors.
Would you like me to make a motion again?
Did you say that you were going on Facebook, Derek? Did you say you were going? Did you indicate on Facebook that you would be going?
I didn't either. Many people.
The reason that I ask is that a lot of people are not on Facebook, so I don't think that's a true.
Well, it may not be a great barometer, but the one vendor, or two vendors, that's a barometer there, the cost of the event and doing the fireworks.
But I could definitely assist, though. We haven't, I don't think we have been, we haven't used our full resources to execute this. I have, I've gotten vendors before, you know, I haven't reached out to any, I didn't, no, it was only two. People wanna make money.
You have to have people there for them to make money.
Well, if we grow it out, people will attend, and we market it, I think waiting to.
We marketed it, Master.
You know what, but I think we waited too long. Tyrone is here, I'm not sure when his board receives information for the marketing aspect of it, the billboard.
Changed. Bring it back next.
It was late?
It was the week after.
Correct, yeah, so it's hard to market it and expect a good turnout if we're waiting weeks prior to start advertising and marketing. I think if we start improving the planning.
We found out very late because we had to wait to see if the Eagles made the Super Bowl. At most part, so it was very, it was very late.
Right, because I know your efforts have, you know, got a good return of like, the movie theater exposure that you have. I think if we do that, continue to do that, well, if you guys would consider continuing to market our events like that, I think we could maximize this opportunity.
We need more time.
But the first one, twenty, what year, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, the event was put on in two weeks, and there was no hesitation.
But there was a lot of pre-planning that was already in place, we just moved the location.
No, there wasn't. It was two weeks prior to the event. There was no pre-planning. If we, it was, and I really don't wanna go into details, however, we got it two weeks prior, and we put it on, and we put the money, and we weren't even budgeted for that.
September, Kathy Stansel sent out the email asking for us to go and look for sponsors in September. Yes, she did.
She sent an email that said if we wanted to get sponsors to let her know so that we weren't doubling the efforts, she didn't ask.
I went out to four people and I got turned down.
Because it's kinda late, you know?
September.
Correct, because you think about the fiscal year, they already have their things budgeted for it.
But are you saying you're gonna go out and get sponsors now?
I said vendors. I offered to do vendors. Well, we are budgeted for it, so it's already budgeted. So it's not a money issue right now because it's budgeted. We knew we were having this.
Can somebody please explain again?
Yes, we allocated funds to be utilized for this purpose, it's true, but the cost of putting on the events has, year to year, has increased, so we are outpacing, even with budgeted funds, we are dipping into hotel motel cash reserve in order to cover the costs. So it is outpacing.
So we're deficient in thirty-five hundred dollars of sponsorship, so if we had the thirty-five hundred dollars, we would've moved forward with it?
More than thirty-five hundred.
The first year, twenty-five hundred was offered, then there's two thousand, and then the deficient amount was, I think, thirty, maybe I'm wrong, but what is the amount that's deficient?
Jackie, do you have any idea?
I'd say so.
I think it was over, the report that we got today at the meeting, wasn't it over four, like, four thousand something?
I didn't keep a copy of it with me.
But generally, we're looking per event, depending on what we're going to have, which is usually a live form of entertainment, which you have that to go with it, then we have with this one, the fireworks, you're looking generally around twenty to thirty thousand dollars per event. You know, we have contracted fireworks through Deep South, which is the vendor we have recently started using for the fireworks production. We got a good deal on that, we've made the payment, so we're there set to do two shows. We've done one, or we'll do one, and then this would be the second show or the first of the two, I guess, for this fiscal year. I keep going back to Red, White &amp; Boom, which was actually in the previous fiscal year, so.
I mean, I understand we're deficient in the sponsorships. We budgeted for it, went a little over, and we're hoping to have that thirty-five hundred with the phones. But I would rather give up a phone, and if we could do the budget amendments, or could we do that?
To be clear, when we did say, we had this conversation at the budget meeting in early May, and stated that we were going to be heavily dependent on sponsorships to make sure that we could cover the cost of the events. I mean, we said that.
Yeah, if we said that in May, why were the efforts not, why didn't the efforts for sponsorship start in such late, fourth quarter of the fiscal year? If we discussed it, and if that was something that we needed to support?
It was something that we all should've known, that I went to my vendor and I get, was able to get twenty-five hundred dollars, and I get them every year for different events. We all need to have people that we go to and we get sponsors.
I would've helped out, but I mean, I didn't know it was dependent on the sponsorships, like, we needed that.
The meeting in September that preceded Kathy sending out the sponsorship matter, I made a statement here in the meeting that we would need council to really push to get sponsorships. Now, that's not written anywhere, but I did make that plea.
Would it be an option to hold off on the phones? If every one of us got a phone, that would be seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars. Could we forego that? I know some of us really need bigger screens, I get it, but could we hold off on that, provide this for our community? I don't, I don't think putting something out there and taking it away from, because we didn't plan efficiently, could we do a budget amendment and just move that around and hold off on the phones?
That's a jacket.
Two different fronts of money.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, I wasn't sure.
And I'll address the phones, maybe in the comments at the end of the meeting, but I'm working with T-Mobile on a proposal they just sent me.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think we should move forward with it and plan to just improve our planning next year.
So, do we now make another motion? What do we do? Jason?
There's no, there's no motion on the table right now.
Okay.
So you can, you can make the same motion, or you can make a different motion?
I'll make the same motion I made before to deny, to cancel.
What do you think, Bob?
Well, I'm, I have mixed emotions about it. The one thing is, I don't mean to be ugly to anybody, one of the reasons we're short in funding is because we've overspent the two other events. We're over budget for Red, White &amp; Boom, we're over budget for the Christmas tree lighting, based on the figures we got. So that means we've got a shortfall. We didn't stay within budget with the first two events. So my thought process is saying we should, I'm thinking along the lines now with Darcy's, to cancel this year's and revisit it in the next year's budget on how we can get it funded appropriately.
Give us more time to get it.
Give us more time, and we'll have to pay better attention to how we're spending money in those two, two events, since we're, based on what I can remember, I can't find it, gee, we're about nine thousand dollars over in those two events.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, Jody, I sent you an email asking about the budget, and you said that at this point we would be able to cover the budget. said that at this point we would be able to cover the budget?
By dipping into cash reserves. I don't know if I said that or not, but that would be how we would cover it.
You know what that means, Derek?
Yeah, we only have two events as a city. Our neighboring city has fourteen events. They pre-plan, and they had, they vote on it in October for the full, next year.
They also have property acts.
Well, they also have, you're right.
And they also have, a lot of those events are sponsored by their, by their businesses in the city.
I get it, okay.
It's not on the city budget.
Bob's looking me, telling me to make a motion. Okay, I'm going to make a motion on...
Item number five.
Item number five, to cancel this year's New Year's Eve block party and move the fireworks display to our Christmas tree lighting.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? I have a motion, item number six, discuss the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year end of budget amendments as presented. Jody?
Jackie?
Hi, y'all. So in your pocket is the fiscal year-end budget amendments, and for the general fund, just to name a few of the larger overages, it was due to a few items, three different departments. The Public Works Department, for example, to advertise due to several bids having to go out. Of course, supplies, utility costs increased. A capital outlay was due to the 150 Oak Street building. And then in the parks, that was due to maintenance and operating at Harris Drive, lake management and replacing playground parts, and then electric for the Harris Park. In the Police Department, insurance checks, when they come in to reimburse for damaged vehicles, that gets put into a revenue fund, which is insurance reimbursements, but unfortunately, when we spend the money for, whether it be a new vehicle or fixing a new vehicle, it will come out of the expense account. So we received an insur, well, we received a check from, where is it, for small equipment from Magnolia Bank that we had to pay expenses for in last fiscal year, and we got reimbursed in this fiscal year, and that was for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Admin, we were over budget because of on legal, for a drive-in accident. It was for professional services, a cost study that was done. We had a new copy of lease. We had subscription-based IT arrangements. We had new positions in the Police and Public Works Department that also was an expense to General Fund. In the revenue, General Fund, we budgeted, we budgeted five million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, no, we received five hundred and forty-four thousand, and that was actually, let me see, that was an increase over what we had anticipated. The Water Fund shares the sanitation fund cash account, and the Water Fund had to subsidize the sanitation fund, and we were over in the sanitation fund by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the Water Fund cash account had to subsidize. Do anyone have any questions?
On that last statement, sanitation, that having gone over, that was less than it did the previous year, so it's moving in the right direction. Again, this is new service having been started. We projected three to four, maybe five years for it to be fully profitable, so it's moving in the right direction. Hopefully, within the next year or two, we'll actually see it start getting above water.
Any questions? I have a motion on item number seven. I make a motion to adopt the FY twenty-five fiscal year-end budget amendments as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Discuss GMA loans for furniture renovations and IT. Jody?
Two different things that we will discuss. Only one of those items carried forward into the next agenda item that require a vote at this time, but again, I'll start with the construction activities as well as furnishing for the new city admin facilities. We're working with GMA and their attorney, Jim Woodward, based on a calendar of events that he's provided, and also some notices for sale of public property and notice of public hearings that have to go into the paper. Obviously, with the city of Hiram being a local government, we cannot sell property like normal people would, which would be hire a real estate agent and sell property. So we still have to go through that formal process of putting it out to bid with it being contoured in the bid to only be, able to be picked up by a bank who's willing to have improvements done with the property and sell it back to the city. It's a, it's a roundabout way of establishing the properties as collateral for the loan. So it is, it's a normal process that GMA has used many, many times. That's the one that's recommended for us. The total amount for the total cost of construction, including the recording fees, the legal fees that would accompany that, is seven hundred and fifty thousand to be paid over ten years plus interest. We're not to the point of doing any approvals on that, but we have released the notices to the paper so that we can move forward with this process. The public hearing would have to be held. We intend to do that on December second, at which time we would also then subsequently have a vote to move forward with the GMA loan at that time. Do you have any questions for me on this? Okay. And then the other part is IT services. We are moving, obviously, to, as we've talked before, from VC Three, who is our current IT service provider, over to InterDev, which is the new IT service provider. In doing so, we were having to negotiate a buyout of leased equipment that we have through VC Three that is still an active lease. The original discussion was an extremely high number, close to half a million, that they said they wanted us to buy out because we were early in breaking their lease, or their agreement, which we denied altogether, but it took a lot of negotiation and a lot of time that I didn't care to have to spend, but we got it down to, the number down to seventeen thousand, and then subsequent to that, or after that, we got the number down to thirteen thousand for the total of the buyout of the leased equipment. Some of that equipment will be replaced in due time because they're Windows 10 machines. The loan is actually going to be applied to the equipment we're having to get to replace the things that are outdated. The new server, which we, we're not using VC Three's server, obviously, we're buying a server to have on site. It'll cover that cost, all of the network switches that we'd be switching over to and having installed, as well as PCs that would be purchased for each individual person that we have working at City Hall. We would also work through InterDev and their ability to buy through Dell at the same state contract pricing that we can get it through Dell or better for these pieces of equipment. Grand total of that, I think I sent that out, the total was going to be around two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We've got it down to just over one ninety.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not a computer person, so you're talking about the new server that's going to have to be here.
Yes.
What's going to be at the new places?
We're working with InterDev to make sure that, all of these buildings are networked. I mean, we have switches in place.
Where other people will be moving, like on Oak Street, and they'll be able to get it from here?
Yes, we have Ethernet switches that will still be able to utilize the same pathways, or if they need to make arrangements to relocate the server, they can do so at that time, but we will probably have the equipment in place before we're ready to move in those buildings regardless.
Okay, I didn't know we could go that far.
May I ask you?
Yes.
What we're putting in is what's called a pass-through server. It'll be resident somewhere in the city, doesn't matter where it's located.
Oh, okay.
But the material will only stay on it for twenty-four or forty-eight hours and be passed up to the cloud, which InterDev will manage at that point. It's just a temporary holding facility for data.
Okay, thank you.
What did you say?
What did you say?
I have a motion on item number nine.
I'll make a motion to authorize the GMA loan for purchase of IT servers, network switches, and computers for the city's pending switch to a new IT service provider in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand plus interest over a five-year term.
All in favor? Opposed? I have a motion on item number ten.
Make a motion, sorry. Make a motion to authorize the rental of Gray's Mill Park for for-profits.
I want to speak up on that one. You guys already did that. This is because you wanted to change what you decided for the work session. So I would need the details that you want to change from the last work session.
I do have some questions about the agreement. So any agree...
There is a motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll tell you what, I would just recommend withdraw the motion at this time, and then maybe have the discussion as to where y'all want to head, and then see what the motion ultimately ends up being. I'll just say, withdraw your motion.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Yes, so I did have a question in reference to the cancellation policy. So it does say if canceled less than thirty days prior, no refund is given. I would like, I think we can be a little more friendly or lenient in that regard, and perhaps, you know, if it's two weeks out, for example, give them fifty percent.
Whatever terms you would like.
Okay.
Yeah, you all requested the same terms as the nonprofits, so that's where that agreement came from.
Okay.
It was just alter, edited to put for-profits on there.
Gotcha. My next question, I guess, would be in reference to items that are not allowed. Helium balloons and confetti, is, I just want to know the thought process. Is it messy?
That is standard at all of our parks. I believe it's due to cleanup, number one, of the confetti, because it's not allowed in any parking facilities. And the balloons, I think that might be a park standard, just because of the pollution of the air when they go up. They get caught in power lines and things like that for no liability. That's , that was only what my guess would be. That was there long before me, so it mimics all of the parks.
While, while you're on that one, Tiffany, I just, the bird feed, what is that about?
Because it's actually dangerous to birds for them to eat, or the ducks for you guys to feed bread. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it was in, okay, so that was for gray...
And bird seed and rice and...
Yeah, with the rice, I'm like, all right, who's throwing rice? But yeah, I get it. The birds, I just understand that. Okay.
Bob had a question in reference to the lights, that the organization is responsible for providing lights. I think you sent an email. Did you receive a response on that? No, okay, sorry. So I don't, I don't know if we get many requests at night.
So I process the special event permit applications, and that's something they would have to put on that application if they're requesting any city services, which would include lights, and I have not received any. And I think I responded to you guys on that and explained that if they want lights, they can certainly request them, and I would get with Michael to tell me how much we should charge them. And also, it's going to depend on the state of those lights. I don't know.
And also the length of the event.
I don't know how many work, don't work.
Now, we, our operations, I'm sorry, our project manager suggested that we include the permit fee and roll that into the five hundred dollars. What do you guys think about that?
While we're trying to be consistent with the profit and nonprofit applications.
The nonprofit's usage fee is three hundred. They do not have a special event permit fee because it's no charge. They're exempt. So if you include, or say, the rental for a for-profit is four hundred, then there are a hundred dollars difference, and that's it. So, I mean, that would, again, be a decision for you all.
Or keep it five hundred and it includes your permit fee.
But that would still make the usage fee only four hundred.
Correct.
Because the special event permit fee is a hundred.
Correct.
And I would prefer you guys just lower that usage fee to four hundred, because they're two separate accounts and two separate processes, the usage and the special event.
Okay, okay. And if we're staying, mayor said we should stay consistent with the non-for-profit, the way that we process those. They're not subjected to a permit fee because they're nonprofits.
They prove their nonprofit status.
So if we have it four hundred dollars instead of five, it makes it easier for you because they're two separate things?
If you want to have the usage fee at four hundred, then I would prefer you to set that usage fee at four hundred.
I think we should consider four hundred and then charge them, and still get the foot.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, but...
But it's still the same.
Well, it's still the same, but you got two different pots of money. So you have to separate them out. And they go in separate accounting lines, correct?
How would you recommend wording it?
Four hundred plus every hundred for the permit.
I mean, just like that. If you guys want to not say five hundred for the usage fee, you want to say four hundred, say four hundred. I mean, that's as simple as it could be.
But then the permanent fee would be a hundred.
Right, but you don't need to set that. That's already set.
That's already set. That's already set.
And are we still including the fee for the lights? Are we letting that five hundred capture that?
That's by event, and whether or not they want to use the lights that are there.
So if they do want to use the lights, we're going to charge them?
Yep.
That's our process now, yes.
What's the cost for the lights? I'm sorry.
That's something I'd have to speak to the operations director about by request. I've never had a request.
You just said that, I'm sorry, Melissa.
There's so many variables.
Yeah, I get it.
How long? Is it just an hour? Is it two hours? I don't know.
Gotcha. That makes sense, okay.
So that, oh, so then we also have to, would they also have to pay Public Works to come out in hourly rate?
Depends. Again, that's a discussion to have with our operations director. I don't know if you want to just give them access to turn that stuff off and on.
It's a nice liability.
No, no, I don't think we should. I think that is a liability.
Or they forget to turn them off, or they just stay on.
But that's, that's an expense for just the park, no bathroom, no light, no, no anything but the, but the grass.
What about the trash receptacles? What's the thought process in not allowing them to use?
They bring their own.
They're responsible for the, it's to minimize the workforce staff, because that park is not a regular park like Ben Hill or Homer Leggett. So the idea behind originally, I assume from the council, was to minimize the burden on staff. So basically, here is your space, contain your event in your space. It's a huge space. I'm not sure that they could find that in many other places for that price, but you have, you have to take care of it before and after.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right. So the only sticking point I have, I guess, would be for the non-return of the entire cancellation fee. Is there any discussion on that or thoughts?
Trying to stay standard with that.
I'm in agreement with that. I mean, we're charging people five hundred dollars to come. We want people to come to our city. I don't know if this is really business friendly. I understand it's a cost, but even with the receptacles, the trash, that's right, they have a little promotion. We have our image on there, you know what? We can put some stipulations into the contract. You are responsible for putting the trash in these receptacles. We put them out. I mean, we are charging, I think it's a hefty cost for businesses, and if, it don't really happen.
They don't have to run our park.
I know. I think they know that.
There's other places they can go.
I know, but I think it's for us. I think we want to be that city to welcome our, like, welcome people into our city, business friendly. welcome people into our city, business friendly, have events that will benefit our community. But yeah, they could go anywhere they want.
And going back to the cancellation, I understand the special event permit has got to be applied for no later than 60 days before the event. So by that 30, they've already gotten their permission from you guys, they've gotten a special event permit, so just a FYI.
Gotcha. All righty, thank you. Anybody?
Can I make a motion or?
I don't even know where we are, but yeah, make a motion.
I don't love it as it stands, but I'll make a motion to authorize the rental of Gray's Mill Park for for-profits.
I'll second.
Just to clarify, that, that is, you're always entitled to withdraw your motion before a vote. What I'm hearing from, from the council is perhaps a motion to authorize the rental of Gray's Mill Park for for-profit entities at a usage fee of $400 under the same terms, otherwise under the same terms and conditions as for nonprofit entities. If that's your motion, I would, I would recommend that you withdraw your first motion and then just say, so moved, I would say so moved on, on what I just said.
Do you want to change that?
No, so, say it again, Jason, withdraw my first motion.
So, is your first motion withdrawn?
Yes.
All right. What I'm hearing from the council is that, is that you would make a motion to approve the rental of Gray's Mill Park for for-profit entities at a usage rate of $400 and otherwise subject to the same terms and conditions as rental as for nonprofits. And if that's what you'd like to do, I'd say, just say so moved.
So moved.
I'll second. We'll get it over with.
All in favor? Opposed? No one has signed up for visitor business? Mayor and staff comments tomorrow morning at 11, 11 a.m.? Chris?
It's at 10 a.m.
Tomorrow 10 a.m., we're going to have our Veterans Event at the Memorial on Harris Drive. We're asking everyone to park at City Hall, there'll be shuttle buses over to Harris Drive. Our Hiram Elementary Chorus will be there, as they have was on last year. So we're asking everyone who can, come on out. The improvements are, are in progress right now. We've gotten, we're, we're almost at the 50% mark on the Harris Drive streetscape, so that's what you'll see going on tomorrow. But tomorrow, the buses, I believe, are going to start shuttling at 9, between 9:15 and 9:30 up to Harris Drive for our 10 o'clock event.
Also on November 11th, at 11 a.m., the American Legion is having their Veterans Day event at the Government Center, Watson Drive. And the same day, at 2:30 p.m., Hiram, Hiram High School ROTC has their Veterans Day event at 2:30 p.m. Bob?
Nothing.
Nope.
Yes.
We were talking about the Christmas parade and I know that's something I think you, Jody said we should touch on while we're here tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so earlier today at, at the meeting, we were discussing whether or not the city of Hiram would like to participate and I said I, I did. I think we should always be part of that, it serves a good cause, so.
It's the same day as our tree lighting.
So it's the same, as it was last year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
They were talking about the staff doing all this for the tree lighting and having to go there for, what, we have to be there at eight or nine in the morning and it doesn't start till?
Either 11 in the morning it starts, or I think we have to be there by 10.
What, what I need is an understanding from the mayor and council about who is wanting to participate in the parade. By show of hands, if you wish, but to accommodate that, we would have to utilize a public works pickup to do so. We would not, because of the Christmas tree lighting, have a trailer available. That and probably the condition of the, we have one trailer that we've been using, I know there's one that they're supposed to acquire at some point, but it would not be feasible for us to put a trailer together, but we can use a pickup. We can set, like, similar to the homecoming parade, a bench in the back to allow for easier seating and then those that wish to walk along with can, or we may end up, if I need to, I can put an additional, the city manager's car can be in there for a ride along if so, if there's that many participating. But again, it is a time commitment that will pull us away from downtown. I just need to know who wants to go. I have to get with the Rotary for the registration fee and it's the primary fee plus each additional vehicle, depending on the number attending.
What's the cost on the additional?
75.
I think 75. Or at least it was last year, that's what I recall looking at, I only briefly glanced at it this past week.
How many people want to go?
Derek, you want to go to the parade?
I've been here a year or so.
I'll go. No, I'm not going to go.
I don't know. I'm not going to be available, that's when I'm coming back.
Oh, okay.
For my trip.
Okay, so.
Every year I go to the trip, but I always get back in time for the tree lighting.
So you have mayor, myself, Melissa, and Derek.
Okay, thank you very much.
How many from your family?
I'll get back to you tomorrow. I'm not sure. They're getting older.
Derek, you got anything?
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody supporting me on this election.
Great pleasure.
Did a great job.
Melissa, Jason, Jenny, I gotta put me up four more years. Yeah, I'm special.
You don't have to.
Yeah, no choice.
All right, now, now pay attention. The next work session will be November the 18th.
What?
Yes.
Good, pay attention, November the 18th. Because Thanksgiving, you know, that holiday with the turkey and all that, get it, rolls in there. So November the 18th, 6 p.m., right here, November the 18th.
Mayor, can I, I forgot to share something.
What's it called?
Yep, okay. Just some things, definitely want to shout out to our public works, our project operations manager. We have a new fence at our park, it looks amazing.
Yes.
Yes, it does. My kids are like, oh, the ugly fence is down! And I'm like, thank you to you and your, and to your department. Also want to share with the council that the Chamber of Commerce is willing to do a ribbon cutting for us, for our new, well, it looks like a new park, the Homer Leggett Dog Park, which you guys did a phenomenal job on. People are utilizing it on a daily basis. Every time I'm on C-Board, I see people here at the circuit train, so that's amazing. Just want to know from you all if you, what would be a good month for us to start planning that? Do we want to do it in the fall or do we want to wait till the spring? Because it has to be scheduled in.
I would say the spring, when the weather-
There's some times to plan it. And I know there's some projects around. All right, and the last thing that I wanted to share, speaking of veterans, we want to thank our veterans, thank you Jody and all the other veterans. Thank you China, Derek, of course, our veteran and our re-elected, so thank you for your service. And China, thank you for showcasing our veterans throughout City Hall. So the last thing I want to share about veterans, the Chamber of Commerce is providing their 4H, I'm sorry, it is Hearts for Heroes, sorry, November 8th, this is this Saturday, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. It's going to also include like a job fair, opportunities for our veterans. There are many sponsors that, so it's going to be a huge event. Please, if you can, support our veterans this Saturday at New Season Church from 11 to 3 p.m. Again, it's hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and that's all I got.
Can I have a motion on item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I apologize, I know this isn't very efficient. Two outstanding items related to our art shop license, I want to see if we can, in the interest of efficiency. There is a fee that will come with an art shop license. All right, you have not set what that fee is. Staff has recommended that it be a fee of $250 annually. All right, that will just go with the classic fee schedule. Our pouring licenses and those are much higher than that, but the 250 is recommended from staff for that art shop license.
Now, where do we get that 250? What's that based on? How do you come to that?
250 is half of the package license for just beer or wine and it's a quarter of the pouring license for beer and wine.
Okay.
It's up to y'all to set it, what it is, but it would be wise to set that tonight before we adjourn.
So is, does other municipalities do the same thing? Is that, is that a standard practice?
Unfortunately, Powder Springs doesn't know what their fee is, but yes, they do have one.
What about Dallas? What's that?
Dallas allows it in every establishment and does not have a license fee.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's dangerous.
Why?
It's very dangerous. Wine?
Yeah.
To be able to drink in a new establishment.
Bring your bottle.
Oh, okay, not the, like, I thought you meant the light, not the license.
Not just the art.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So do we establish a $250 fee? Yes or no?
I think that's reasonable.
I think, yeah, it's reasonable in comparison, it's not, nowhere near as high as what they, if they were getting a pouring license or, what was the other one?
Package.
And then there's also a license for tasting rooms?
Mm-hmm.
And it's less than that, what, what that is, is just, it's pretty much a basic fee.
To be able to have, sorry, I'm trying to make sense of this in my head. Okay, so to be able to be considered a art shop, you have to have a license?
Business license.
This is how you all drafted the ordinance, yes. So if you are going to license that, regulate that activity, then that comes with a regulatory fee because there's an application, there's requirements, so the city has to make sure that that shop meets that requirement and potentially is, is up for enforcement as far as compliance goes.
Gotcha.
And remember that the service in, in allowing for alcohol in the state of Georgia is considered a privilege as opposed to a right and cities and counties and the state are authorized to regulate, regulate that through licensing.
I think 250 is good.
Melissa, Derek, see your eyes down there?
I, I, yeah, I, you know how I feel. I, I want more businesses to come to us and I am, I understand.
250.
Of course they could afford 250, I'm sure they could afford 250.
Derek, what do you think?
I would say 100.
We'll, we'll start, we always get, we'll make adjustments, correct?
Absolutely.
You said it's half of the 500 for the pouring.
It's half of the package, but it's a quarter of the pouring.
A quarter.
And Dallas doesn't charge their businesses.
I still think 250 is reasonable.
Dallas also doesn't license them.
They don't?
Correct. They just allow it in every retail establishment.
So if there's no license, anyone could just open a art shop and have the BYOB?
It didn't even have to be an art shop in Dallas.
Okay.
It could be any shop of any kind.
So they allow BYOB throughout their city and they don't charge them?
So you could have your hairdresser and you could direct.
And it's the only one of this nature in our city and we're charging them?
Keep in mind-
Dallas has how many?
But they're also moving here.
Mm-hmm.
They are moving here from Dallas. It's desirable. And these are not outlandish requirements.
I'd say $100, you guys.
I'll second the 100.
You're talking about, we, we can lower it, but we're going to start, start it off like that, why not start it off a little business friendly, if there are more businesses that come in?
So there's a motion at 100 by Ms. Byrdell and there's a second by Ms. Carroll. Any more discussion?
No, I think.
All in favor? Opposed? Three to two opposed.
All right.
I make a motion that it's a 250.
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor? Opposed? Three to two passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more item. I apologize.
He said two, he said two.
Well, I, I'm going to blame, I'm going to blame Councilwoman Carroll on this one.
Okay, I'll take the blame.
All right, so in response to your question earlier, Councilwoman Carroll had a question about section 8A, excuse me, section A8 of the ordinance, which says art shop customers shall remove from the premises all unopened alcoholic beverages brought by them to the art shop upon departure. No open containers of alcohol may be removed from the art shop. The question was, what about people recorking or recapping those items of alcohol that they've brought that aren't completely emptied yet?
Right.
The, the goal of the statute is, statute of the ordinance is to avoid people simply leaving with open, truly open containers. So this is a proposal that I thought we might just throw out there for your consideration rather than bringing it up at the next work session. Could add the following sentence, and this doesn't, this does not apply, as I've drafted it, to containers of beer, because I think once those are opened, they're opened, all right? A container of wine or distilled spirits, which has been resealed with a cork stopper or screw cap, shall not constitute an open container for the purposes of this subsection. If that works for you all, I would recommend that there be a motion to add, the motion would be as follows, to amend new section 6, 8, subsection 8, to add that sentence to the ordinance.
Would that-
A question, Ms. Carroll had brought up that there was something that it said it had to be put into a glove compartment or trunk.
That would be something that they're going to have to deal with in the vehicle and that's going to be controlled by state law.
Now, does that apply, I, I think it does, to the alcohol, because we also, we have wine and alcohol and I'm not sure if it's the same thing.
Wine, it applies to wine and distilled spirits.
Oh, I just said it. I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
Just not beer.
Missed that.
So if you're in favor of that, a motion that says so moved.
I'll make a motion so moved.
Thank you, and I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Is this agenda?
Jason, why don't you just start saying so?
So moved all the time.
Oh, I do want to mention the Beatty, Beatty Street planting is Friday at 10.
I have it on my calendar.
Also like to remind everyone that November 11th, other than just being Veterans Day-
It's your birthday.
We're all, well, okay, yes, it's my birthday, but we are all, the, the city-
It's closed.
-will close on Veterans Day as holiday.
Speaking of the planters, there, I'm sorry, but we have an issue on the corner across from Harry, from Olive Tree. Is that being resolved?
What's the issue?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were aware of it. A, a truck backed into the bricks and-
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We're aware of the damage.
It was a safety issue.
We're, we're going to be working to get quotes on directing that, yes.
Mayor, sorry, one more, real quick thing. We just finished the 29th Annual Georgia Association Chiefs of Police Admin Assistant in Atlanta. Nora Gibney was nominated for Admin of the Year for departments between 25 and 50 personnel. Unfortunately, she did not make it, but she was nominated and was one of only two or three nominations in the state for that position for departments of that size. So amongst the field of over 575 departments, it's an honor to have her nominated. And then finally, I also want to thank China for her efforts in getting the veterans portraits out this afternoon. The post looks very nice.
Thank you, Derek. Does anybody else have anything?
No, no more.
Kidding.
Can I have a motion on item number 11?
Make a motion to the right of the session.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right.